And then I'm gonna go ahead and call to order Rockdale Plating and Zoning Meeting of Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. Could I have a roll call, please?
Chair Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Davidson. Mr. Miles.
Mr. Ratliff.
Here.
Mr. Willie.
Here.
Mr. Barcheck.
Here.
Council Lee John Starnes.
By the narrowest of margins, we have quorum. Please stand with me as we do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gonna do an invocation? Please remain standing.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together today. We ask that you bless this meeting and the decisions and the discussion had herein. Lord, we ask that you bless all of the residents of Rockdale and their families and keep them safe. Lord, we just thank you for all the blessings that you've given us and ask you to continue watching over us. All of this, Lord, we ask in the name of your son. Amen.
Before we go any farther, if you're wanting to speak, please sign in on the sign-in sheet. When I call your name, you'll go to the podium, tell us who you are, where you live. There's only two. We can get this done. John Rush.
Is there a limit here, time limit?
Yes.
Three minutes?
Yes, we have a lot on the agenda.
Okay.
Please.
John Rush, 7202 Yocley. At last week's meeting, other, after public input ended, city employees gave three potential reasons for the parking ordinance. This is K, item K. One was aesthetics. The city doesn't employ an art director nor should it. Aesthetics are completely subjective. If a homeowner wants to put a 57 Chevy or 65 Mustang on his lawn, that would look appealing to me. If he rather decorate with something I think is ugly, that is also his right. The argument from aesthetics is invalid. Growth was also mentioned. Two residents expressed their intent to leave town because of this ordinance. Others expressed economic fears. Forcing them to install costly driveways might drive them from their homes. Those from elsewhere who are considering a move might avoid Rockdale because of this ordinance. This seems like the opposite of growth to me. When our rise of minutes before last week's meeting began, the parking lot was full. I had a park across Wilcox between the fence and the road. If the city is sincere about growth, it should grow a larger parking lot. The argument for growth makes no sense. Then there was the argument that the other Texas towns were doing the same thing. If those town governments jumped off a cliff, would Rockdale's government also make that leap? Rockdale doesn't need to be a copycat, and those towns aren't necessarily right. I have no problem with trying a good idea. Kidnapping vehicles and holding them for ransom because their owners parked them on their own grass rather than cement or asphalt does not qualify as a good idea. Reasons given in the ordinance include hindering grass growth, increasing dirt and mud in the streets, and damaging the grade. The hot, dry summers here hinder grass growth. I have dead patches in my backyard and I never parked a vehicle there. Enough water can alleviate this problem, but the city isn't giving water away. Adding a concrete asphalt or paved driveway will kill more grass than a parked car will. No increased dirt has resulted from me parking a vehicle on my grass. The dirt in the street in front of my property comes from a French drain in the yard of a house around the corner. The water drains down Brazos and takes a left onto Yocley. This problem would be eliminated were the water directed to flow straight down Brazos, which has a continual grade rather than divert to Yocley, which levels before it reaches my house. Dophers, moles, and snakes have done more to damage my property's grade than any vehicle parking has, but I don't see the city declaring them a nuisance. I'll skip to the end here. Last week, I indicated that I'd have no problem with the ordinance if the city paid for the residential parking improvements. I've since realized that this would give preference over those who already have paved driveways. I'd rather that the council crush this infamous ordinance. I cede the floor.
Thank you. Willie Phillips.
Hey, my name is Willie Phillips. I live at 709 Rice Street. And my question is, what brought this about? You know, having to make these changes. You know, I said it, 150 years old and it's never been a problem before. And also, the fee to find that $500, man, I just, really, that's outrageous to the citizens of Rockdale. I think they really need to consider different ideas or, like I said, just counsel this ordinance, just counsel it out. Thank you.
Thank you. No other citizens communications signed in? Okay, public hearing. A, conduct a public hearing on property located at property ID 20077, 23877, and 15190 along Texas Street to change its zoning classification from A agricultural to R1 PUD, single-family residential planned unit development. Anyone here to speak on that? That started at 138 and it ended at 138. Actually, number five, receive a presentation from Chair Williams on the city council meeting. The last city council meeting, we had one item, and that was the plating of preliminary plating of property that had never been plated before, and the council approved it. That's the only thing we had go before then. Action items. Here we go. B. I'm gonna go ahead and do a little housekeeping first and then get him. So review and approve the minutes from the meeting on August 6th, 20th, and the 27th. That should be in your packet. Pages four.
Just had a couple of corrections. I don't know what page this is. Decimal should be decibel. You got that already? Thanks, Shannon. I'm sure it's auto correct. She thinks it's smarter than we are, but I think that's what's all I can add.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes as presented for both meetings.
I'll second.
For all three meetings, actually.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. It may be approved. All those in favor, right hand. Okay. Carries. Now we dump this. Item C, we'll start with E, considering taking any necessary action on recommendations to the city council regarding a rezon, what we just went through. So what we did is we took a hearing from it, now we're taking an action on it.
Was this the one that was actually residential at one time?
No, this has been agriculture. Shannon's gonna pull up a PowerPoint. I'm gonna give the floor to the developers who are actually in attendance. But to give you a background on this property, you just saw a plat on this. That was Angela White's. And now it's potentially going to be sold. It's currently agriculture. Everything in the blue there. There's proposed to do a planned unit development, which the standards are in your packet. The only difference from the one you've seen of cornerstone in this is they're proposing a slightly smaller lot size. Instead of 40s, they're proposing to go with 30s. And you could see a potential of 224 residential lots in this if this rezon's approved. This is the first step in making that happen. I'll let the developers give you a presentation of what the elevations will look like, and they can answer any of the questions that you may have.
Good afternoon. I'm Philip Argus. I'm the developer for the project. The lot count's actually 233, because there's a smaller tract to the south that's detached, but will be part of the same ordinance. We do have on that portion a plan to do attached product. There are some water lines that bisect the property, so I've gotta do a little extra work on that area. But there's a site plan in here. There we go. And so, see, we'll connect the Texas street. There is a right-of-way that is discontinued on Lee Street to the south that ties in, which there's also a well there, so it's in the way. So we won't be, we won't be able to connect that right-of-way right now. Something would happen, have to happen with that well. But we've got access, you know, everywhere we need to provide fire access, utilities, you know, we'll have, of course, detention ponds. The sliver in the middle of the south area would be detention area. The area to the northwest and to the northeast, those green areas would be detention. The green triangle in the middle would be a pocket park. And then we would have, you know, sidewalks throughout and then working through other kind of amenities through the development of the process. So we're about half and half as far as the 30-foot lots versus the 40-foot lots, which is a growing use in the state. And so, I mean, with that, I can answer any questions.
Assad? For the homes? Yes. The near?
So I can let Dan Brule with Lennar is the builder that is in the project.
I'm sorry, I did not hear the question.
Is it gonna be hardy panel? Is it gonna be brick? Is it gonna be required?
It's gonna be hardy plank, yes.
No, no brick or rock frontage?
We're considering that possibility, maybe in a wainscot.
So with the current lot sizes, the houses are gonna be 1,500 square feet, I guess, somewhere?
They're actually gonna vary. We have proposed right now four different plans on the 30-foot lots. It is a product that has been very successful for us in Leander. And it is that picture right there. Those are 15-foot wide units, and they start at about 1,100 square foot and go up from that point. That gives you a good idea of what the units look like. It's a rendering. We also have, I believe in your docket, was some photographs of existing product as well. The separation of the two. The product that's up here right now is for the 40-foot wide lot. This is a 30-foot wide home, two-car garage, that has been very successful for us in multiple areas. And that's what we would propose utilizing here.
I'm just curious, what's kind of your average cost on these homes?
On the, on the 30-foot wide lots, that's probably gonna end up being about 225 is my best guess, 220, and go up to about 300, 320, somewhere in there.
How many bedrooms for those?
We have one small in the 15-foot product line. We have one small, two-bedroom, two-bath. The rest of them are the three- or four-bedroom, two or three-full baths. And again, all of this product line is Lennar product, which is, everything is included. We refer to it as EI. Everything is included. That means all of the appliances for the kitchen are included in the price.
You said it's 1,100 to how many, under 40-foot? 14, what'd you say?
Let me get out the exact. Yeah, for the Welton series, this is 1,500 square foot.
Yeah.
Starts at 1,013 square foot and goes up to 1,535 square feet. The 40-foot lot product line is what we call our cottage series, and that one starts at 1,266 and goes up to 1,500 square foot.
So we're a tick under $200 a square foot?
That's correct. With everything included, yes, sir.
What, when would construction start?
I beg your pardon.
If approved, when would construction start?
Just as soon as this develops.
So are you talking a two-to-three-year plan?
For total overall, yes, sir. Probably a two to a two-and-a-half year.
Okay.
And the development would start very, very soon after approval on the final plan plans.
What about that current road that enters? Because I know right now it's, it's now, right, unapproved, so to speak.
I'll let my nephew answer that one.
Yeah. It's paved currently, but we're doing a traffic study right now to understand exactly what the ultimate section will look like, and then we will improve it, you know, as required by the traffic study. And so we're gonna dedicate a right-of-way for the ultimate build-out, and then we'll build, you know, as we go, what's needed.
Green belt area, is that where water tends to go? Is that a containment-type area there?
It is, yes.
Yes, my other question would be going to staff. Utilities? Do we have sufficient utilities, water?
The water, we do. We're doing a sewer analysis right now, that they are gonna help pick up certain developments.
So the, kinda off to the, I don't know, if we want to point to it. So through here is where I think there's some sewer concerns, just talking with Public Works Director. And so as they're doing their analysis, we'll work with them on how it needs to be upgraded and participate in the cost.
So the capacity that is available at the plant, I believe?
Right.
How it is transported, how it's?
Fire, we're gonna have for fire suppression, because that's pretty tight lot lines in there.
Yes, that fire suppression would be required from a sample of hydrants you've been talking about.
Yeah.
And talking about the sewer, waste, waste by the creek capacity.
And you've met with them several times? Grade changes? We're not gonna dump water on somebody?
No, the areas that you see, the detention, the northeast triangle, and the west, when the large one to the west, that's where the water naturally goes. Right now, there's a small ridge. That's why the area to the north is smaller, because there's not as much water going that direction as there is to the west.
That would be an issue. They would be addressed in the plating process to ensure they would be required to control all the water runoff from their site, not be any greater than it is today.
Commissioners, do you have questions?
So the staff recommends approval other than getting that sewer analysis?
Cool, work on that, but that won't hold up this item.
Any concerns from you?
And this is, this is the first step in a process to review.
Right.
Once the, once the conditions of the plat are approved, when it goes to council, they'll also be looking at the plat as well. The plat coming back to the planning commission, and they are looking as well at painters and a person that fits this development as well.
I guess my biggest concern is traffic flow, just because we already, I mean, Cornerstone is just right down the road. That's a lot of traffic. We're pushing out Ackerman. Lots of traffic. I mean, that's 800, 800 homes, just in that, that and the one just right down the road.
They can't, it's gonna be very difficult. I'm assuming you guys are looking at a lot of your people working around Rock, Georgetown, Austin area. It's gonna be at 7:30, 7:15 in the morning. It's gonna be a challenge.
Right, that's one of our first processes is traffic impact analysis, which is what we've got started right now.
And, you know, everything's hearsay in the world, but, you know, there's always been talk of how, I guess that's 487 somehow gets back over, or 908 can get back over through Woodchamber Road, which solves a lot of that problem. But again, hearsay and talk, but.
Staff question. Where are the 200 concrete homes in relationship to this? The ones that we approved for the?
I don't think that's 200. That was.
The one, you're probably referring to Wilcox.
Yeah.
Is 14. On Wilcox.
Yes.
There's a potential for more, but they have not submitted anything to the city on that.
And it's how many?
The one that's approved is 14.
14 plus 600 plus 200. So we're looking at potential for 1,000 homes in this area, right? Okay, action item. Consider taking any necessary action on a recommendation to the city council regarding a rezon request.
I recommend that we approve the recent, this step of the process, the rezon request.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Those in favor, raise your right hand.
And again, we're approving going to council, correct?
We're approving the change from agricultural to residential to go to council.
Yeah, so it'll have to come back through.
Yeah, several times.
This can come back several times, yes. Anyway, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, right hand. Motion made, seconded, and carries.
So in regard to this particular issue, can you tell them that the schedule is, that is, that it will be?
So you will be seeing the preliminary plat probably at your next meeting, and, you know, they can give the comments back. You're supposed to see one now. It was not a complete submittal, so they're fixing it. It will submit it again, so that way you can see the lot layout with their proposed drainage is. Everything that your concerns are is what the preliminary plat addresses. If you recommend approval to council, and they approve, then all that infrastructure upgrades, road upgrades that needs to be installed will be installed, and then you will see what's the final plat that acknowledges that, or the city expects that, what's installed, so that way they can go vertical.
So it'll be carried over to council next Monday?
Yes, council will see. I'm sorry, it was in October. So your next meeting, you'll see the preliminary plat. Council will see everything at the same time in October. That's just how the deadlines sell this time around.
Oh, yeah. Okay. You got over the first hurdle. We're gonna rezon.
There's a few, yeah.
We're gonna suggest to them to rezon from agricultural to residential.
Absolutely, okay.
The Texas street gonna go all the way through from 79 to the new housing project. You gotta talk to Clark about that property right by 79.
Ben, you wanna answer that?
To answer the question to the best of my ability, there's gonna be two roads that access this potentially. Again, this is all gonna depend on how that traffic impact comes back. Texas is gonna be one of those roads that does not service cornerstone. That's actually a secondary route in case the highway gets blocked off for whatever reason, then they have a fire emergency exit, is how they refer to it in their plat, to go down Texas. But not all of your traffic is coming down Texas for both these developments.
I didn't answer your question. You're supposed to go to the podium, but we've already voted on it, so really.
I was just asking for it, like Smith Street, they gonna be widening out, you know?
Smith Street's not gonna be impacted by this development.
Well, I know my disdevelopment, but like going to the other development, because I know it's gonna be about 80 to 100 more houses put up at the end of St. April Street.
So if they do that, they'll do the same thing. They'll come back with a traffic impact analysis. They'll tell you what that volume's gonna be and what that, how that road needs to be improved, and then the developer ends up paying for the infrastructure upgrade.
All right, we're gonna close that. We're gonna, K, consider taking any necessary action on a recommendation to city council regarding an ordinance amendment for parking on unimproved surfaces. I'm struggling with this in lieu of our last meeting, Ben.
So staff has done a lot of research and appreciate everybody's comments, and we've gotten a lot of good feedback from the community on other cities ordinances. And so I've put in here two items for your consideration. You can go neither way if you choose to. You can remove the ordinance. It's strictly up to you guys. But the first one I did reference at the meeting on Tuesday was that we proposed that language for, to add more surfaces that would be considered improved. The other thing that we've done is we've recommended to remove not allowing people to park on the street for more than four hours, so that way there won't be a timeline constraint on them. And then we've also proposed to remove impounding vehicles, so that way it would just be a fine basis if somebody's in violation. That way they could keep their car and wouldn't have to pay impound fees to get it back.
Let me be clear on this. If we do nothing, it stays status quo, right?
Correct.
As is. We can amend it to include more coverage, options for parking. We can reject it, or we can seek direction from council to proceed with this. Is this one of my options or not?
It is. You are the advisory boards. I would at least tackle this at your workshop, and I have a few other items that we should speak about before doing that.
Yeah.
You can make a recommendation however you want to. If you wanna leave it as is, you can make that recommendation. If you wanna make it off an amendment, you can make the recommendation. If you wanna make the recommendation to remove and appeal the ordinance, you can do so, but it will ultimately be council's discretion, as you are aware.
Yes.
But we've done some research on some surrounding communities to see, because I had some good feedback from a citizen on who, Round Rock, for example, gives exemptions, where how they word it is, any property that already has obtained a certificate of occupancy, which means somebody's living in it and it was up to code at a certain point in time, does not have to install improved surface parking until they make upgrades to their property, which will be specified in code typically. Any addition that you add square footage would require an upgrade to your improved surface. Improving your property by more than 50% value would do so. If you choose to go that route, you can. There's other that acknowledge just dirt drives, that they specifically only allow them to go gravel, and everybody else has to go improved. If you wanna add exemptions, it's possible. About 50% of my research so far, communities exempt those who are already existing, and 50% do not. So it's really a 50-50 split.
Hang on, don't go away. I got some more questions. Yes?
In regard to your question about, you know, seeking direction from council, an option, this board is really an advisory board to the council, so you as individual board members could potentially seek out advice from individual, an individual council member or two, but it's really intended that you are giving them recommendations, not the other way around. But, you know, you do wanna, you do want to represent them fairly and be on the same page. So I understand that question. But really, it is up to you to make a recommendation to council in regard to this particular ordinance. And so like Ben said, you know, you have multiple options. You can recommend that the ordinance be rescinded. You can recommend that it stay exactly the way it is. You can take no action and make no recommendation in this regard, or you can recommend specific changes to the ordinance. And I think that we've talked about a few that would, in fact, make the ordinance a little bit more enforceable and allow staff to address the issue that is out there. I will say also, I've talked to the attorney, that if we do make changes to the ordinance that at least make it, you know, at least make it somewhat enforceable, we have the authority at the staff level to incrementally enforce the ordinance, so that we don't necessarily have to come down on every single property ordinance that's in violation, but can address those that are the worst violators to begin with, over time.
How do you deal with exemptions for, if we go forward and amend this ordinance? Exemptions for, like the fair and the?
That's not residential.
Fire department. But that's not residential technically, but that came up a lot.
And the fact is that those are residential areas.
Right.
So we could write into this ordinance exemptions, specific exemptions. I think that we saw some in the, in the examples that we had that exempted certain city events or certain public events, things of that nature. But the other thing about the exemptions that you talked about, that would kind of create a legal nonconformist type situation, is that they could not make the situation worse. You know, in other words, if they currently today have two parked vehicles in the grass, when, you know, the ordinance is in effect, next week they couldn't decide to park five vehicles in the grass. They would be limited to what the extent to which they were in violation would be allowed to continue. It just couldn't get worse.
I don't think there's any way to track that.
No, but now you're talking about really.
Well, the only way you could, the only way you could enforce that would be, you know, for Ben to go through the city, you know, upon the adoption of any amendments, to videotape the entire city and go through and to be able to document, you know, what vehicles they had that might be in violation. It's gonna, it would be very, very difficult to enforce, but that'd be the only way.
I saw somewhere that there was an exemption recommended for holidays.
Do you have overheads of your suggestions? Do you have overheads?
I don't think so.
We have hard copy.
You do.
I know, like, for instance, there was one that said that only the front yard, this ordinance is only for the front yard, the side yard, which is your building line, which is the front of your house, you can park wherever you want. Is that correct? Like, if you had a travel trailer, you could park it on the side of your house. It just cannot extend past the front of your house.
Some do tackle it that way. We currently don't. We just only allow backyard. But I've seen it, I've seen it that way. Some go to the extent that you have to screen it, so if you're gonna park it in your side or rear yard, it has to be screened, which means you can't see it. We don't specify that in ours. We just say if you park in your backyard, then you're okay. But we do say that you cannot park it in the front or side yard currently without being on some type of improved surface.
The rear yard is defined as everything behind the rear building line, so even if it's on the side, as long as it's behind the rear building line of the house, it'd be considered.
I did. So I saw some exemptions for holidays. Christmas, a lot of us have family members, more cars, that sort of thing. Did you see any of that?
Yes, and you can tackle that in a multitude of ways. You can say that it just can't be parked there for more than 24 straight hours, or you can actually mention the days that you, you know, acknowledge that federal holidays or whichever holidays you'd like to acknowledge, you can say that it'd be exempt that day, if that's something of interest. As far as the exemptions I'm referring to is more, as Tim put it, you're legal nonconforming. So if you already exist, then you would be okay, as long as you don't upgrade your property by square footage, increase property value to where you need to get building permits, and then you're obtaining a new certificate of occupancy.
Either way, the press 15%?
50%?
The impervious cover.
Impervious cover.
Impervious, or whatever, how you wanna say it.
With the definition we proposed, you give the option of some pervious and some impervious for those that may be close to that line. I will say from an inspection standpoint, not very many people are close to covering 50% of their lot. So you're not gonna run into that issue very often, but there are options available.
Yes, Tim? Go ahead, tell us.
No, I was, I was also gonna mention the fact that, you know, there are events like you were talking about at Christmas, when you have, you also have things like graduation parties or things like that that are temporary, and that's just gonna be a matter of whether or not that is something that the city is gonna come down, and I can't imagine that we would enforce.
Right.
I mean, this isn't. I mean, y'all aren't gonna go out on Christmas or something and see how many cars are in yards.
I will say, on the, the way code enforcement runs under my purview, we don't cite somebody the first time we see something, because you may catch somebody, I give the example of a trash bag. Someone's trash bag may be outside their trash bin, and I drove by at 12 o'clock, and it was out there. At 12:05, they came outside and picked it back up, because they realized it fell out of the trash can. You usually give people a little bit of time, usually a week, to see if they're gonna abate that problem. So graduation parties, you're not gonna have a week-long party. So maybe on Monday, you parked in the grass, and I drove by and saw that, so I kept an eye on it, and then next Monday I come by and nobody's there, you wouldn't get a violation. But if those cars are still there, then you're obviously using that for a longer-term use than a one-off party, or whatever you have planned at your own home.
Questions? Commissioners?
So the materials that would be approved would include crushed rock, gravel. It says there are other materials laid over subsoil, like chip seal or the set foam of your tar.
Chip seal is considered an asphalt product, so that would be covered in that.
Do you have a price estimate on like the pavers or the grid system?
I do not. It's been quite a while. We haven't talked to the grass paper company that we get our design standard from in probably two years, so I'd imagine costs have gone up on that since we've last spoken.
So should we include asphalt specifically?
The way that.
That was in the original.
It's already in your improved surface. Though this new, just add some other standards that would be okay.
The original.
Right.
Asphalt, concrete, and asphalt work. That's what started the problems with the commercial ordinance. That was the only two options available in the ordinance.
Right, it's just not in the revised one. Or is this a revised one?
No, those are.
Just suggestions.
This is a suggested definition if you wanna include it. It doesn't say that it's not allowed. It would really go in the other material, and the way you would define that is, it provides a hard-driving surface, resists rutting, things of that standard. So if somebody came in with asphalt, and it doesn't specifically list that, we know that asphalt's not gonna rust and rut, and it's a hard surface.
It's brick or stone.
Like, this is gonna be hard to regulate. Somebody could go get a wheelbarrow full of gravel, throw it out there, spread it out, say, hey, I've got gravel. I mean, you're gonna, people are gonna argue, argue with you.
He knows that, yeah.
Yeah, so you can be as specific as you want, or you can leave it up to the homeowner's interpretation of what no rutting means. You know, I've seen some communities, they say it has to be a six-inch base that you install that resists rutting. You can be specific, or you can really give the option that may be for their property. They may drive a smaller vehicle that's not as heavy, that won't rut as easily, so you give them a little bit more. It's strictly your call, if that's something you're even interested in.
So at our original meeting, I said, could we extend this up until November or December to make a decision? And we said we were under deadline because it was supposed to start the enforcement phase.
Well, staff's been directed not to, to do enforcement at this moment. And you're, and so this is, we are in the amendment or removal phase of this ordinance. And so with community engagement, we'd like to see this resolved quickly as they would like to see it resolved quickly.
I mean, I don't, I don't understand what two or three more months is going to do. It's still the same problem with the same results. We're just putting it off if we wait two or three more months.
Well, it was because of the enforcement phase and at that time.
So we won't be enforcing anything until something changes in this ordinance or city council says nothing's changing and begin enforcing.
Unless certain timeframe goes by and then I'm going to tell council either rescind it.
Yeah, that was kind of the.
I can't, I can't just ignore an ordinance forever, so.
What, what is the normal, how does that work? I mean, you're going to say you're going to let it run for so long with no enforcement.
It is subjective. The longer it goes, the more potential hot water I can get in for not enforcing ordinances, so.
I just think we ought to be as specific as possible, even though you're going to say in here are other materials. So if asphalt's going to be one of them, we should include that. If brick is going to be allowed, stone, whatever it should be, I feel should be in here because there's going to be questions.
I was going to say, the way, the way it's worded would allow for those types of materials. And, you know, one of the issues in regard to your comment about them just bringing in, you know, a couple of wheelbarrels full of gravel and dumping them down and saying that's fine, is, is it has to be maintained also. So, you know, if they do that, that might only last for a couple of months and then they're going to be back, right back where they're at. So that's why it's important that when they do it, it be done properly so that it lasts and so they're not having to come back every few months to, to redo what they've done. But it is an engineered standard that, you know, we're asking them to meet, so.
And I guess, I don't know if it's currently required to have a permit for bringing in rock and gravel. I know concrete is.
Not, not, not rock and gravel. We do concrete because we're going to inspect the pre-pore of that.
And then, and then on taxes, as far as taxes, is improved surface such as what we're talking about. I, I know for sure concrete is, but asphalt, road base, what have you, will that be noted on the, as far as when they go and reassess your taxes annually?
I have no idea how the tax, how they would do that because that's outside of our office.
Well, I know concrete would, but I don't know how, how asphalt or how crushed rock, crushed granite.
Maybe that's a question we need to find an answer to. They were saying that doing this will improve property values, so.
Yeah.
So we can ask the appraisers, but that's outside of the city office. So I do not know what the regulations are.
I understand, I just don't want to enforce something that, I understand we're in a time crunch, but we don't want to just, okay, yeah, this is your new ordinance. And then here we are two months from now, after we get word from the tax office, yes, it's going to make your taxes go up. You know, I, I want to make sure we understand what, how this is going to affect all the citizens prior to enforcing it. Because I feel like that's kind of what happened. That's why we are where we are today.
Wasn't there already the ordinance on the book already? And we amended it to include the grass pavers? Do you know the history on it, Ben?
As, as far as improved surfaces, it was already on the book. But the way that that was done was when you had obtained a new certificate of occupancy or you had a use change, you had to install a driveway that was of improved standards for residential purposes. Commercial would have to go with improved parking lots. So that's how it was done. But there hasn't been an ordinance that's been adopted that doesn't legally nonconform properties that already existed.
But if we're saying that 70% were not within the ordinance, then that wasn't being done then?
Well, it was, it was only on new.
Right, it's only on new.
Only on new, not on.
Yeah, everybody that's been polled is essentially existing because they all have their certificate of occupancies that allow them to live in their structures, which would not have been under that already adopted improved surface standard that cornerstone estimate that they're using for reference.
I have another question. In some ordinances that you see, they really, by doing this, people are going to be parking in the streets, right? And we've already talked, and citizens have already talked about narrow streets. So some ordinance that I, ordinances that I've seen, they specify if the street is only X number of feet wide, you can't make people park on the street, people can't on both sides of the street. We've talked about that a little bit. Do you see adding something like that in, in this ordinance?
So there are some cities that I saw that tackle it by permitting basis where they essentially acknowledge a street where someone comes in, they apply for a permit and say, I'm going to have three vehicles at my property and your ordinance says that I cannot park on the street. So they acknowledge that and allow them to park there. That's, that's been a 50/50 one as well. It's not, not many of them do it, but there's enough to do it that it's not just a one-off.
But I think she's talking about more like if you have a street that you know a car is on each side.
A bus.
Having some kind of signage or some kind of thing, no parking on this side of the road or.
Right, so that's the other way you can tackle it. If it's, if it's not a road that specifies that you can't park on it, then you can ask your police department. We've done it on Bell. When you get down West Bell, it gets extremely narrow. And so we had concerns, citizens asked for that and we, it was installed that you can only park along one side of the street.
At one time, wasn't Murray a street that you could only?
Yeah, a long time ago.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Yeah, you couldn't park on it during certain hours of the day.
And we have streets like that. I'd, I'd have to pull it though because it's not something that my department deals with. But like I referred to last night, I know for a fact, House is one of them with the median there that you can't park in. I think they do it maybe by a certain area that you can't park on, but what theirs.
Well, that's why we were developing the corridor plan and then we derailed that to wait for the master plan to identify those areas of narrow streets. Ben, give me your best bullets now.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
I just think they were going to have to address that if the bus is coming down streets and cars on both sides and the streets too narrow.
Staff recommendations, please.
So we do not have a recommendation for you. Now I have several ways you can go based on how you, as a commission, feel is, would best serve your community.
I have a recommendation for you.
Yes?
Allow for the, allow for the materials that he has listed as alternative, alternative materials to asphalt, concrete and grass pavers. Eliminate the restriction on on-street parking. If that becomes an issue, we can address that on a site-by-site basis and eliminate the requirement for staff to tow vehicles that are in violation. I think if those, if those changes are made to the ordinance, then we will have the ability to implement it and affect the problem. Or we'll be able to enforce it to, to the extent that we can limit the problem from getting any worse and also work on, on improving the situation.
Shannon, did you get those? You've got all those, so in case somebody asks for to add those to, you got it captured, okay.
And that, I mean, that's my recommendation as a city manager. Ultimately, whatever you recommend, council will have to also act on. Council may say, no, we're just going to scrap the whole thing. Or they may say, yes, we're okay with your, or your recommendations, or they might do something completely different. But I think that that will allow us to improve the situation. And, I mean, it's not, there's still going to be some people that are not happy. But I think that we'll, it's in the best interest of the city to do that.
So by adding, but maybe a couple more specifics under what we consider improved surfaces, I would recommend us doing that. And we're going to somehow have to worry about streets not being wired enough.
I, I just don't see how you could go to zero with no parking regulations when you're talking about adding. I mean, we have a thousand new homes coming up, we haven't even hit the growth part, you know? I just don't see how you, I mean, that's been brought up, but just doing away with it, I don't see how we just do away with it.
And I, and I would say that, you know, our, our current requirement requires people to put in.
Right.
But it doesn't not, I mean, it wouldn't, it doesn't mean to say that they're putting driveways and then still parking the grass.
Correct.
That could be.
I mean, so you could be, you know, if, if we're 69% now, so you could have a thousand more homes with five or six hundred of them that were back to the same problem.
You're saying that this ordinance in place?
I'm saying, I'm saying, you know, one of the things was you could just rescind the whole thing. I don't think that's an option. I think the option is to work within what you have and, and make it as bearable as you can for people. You know, because we, we all have limits of what we can do, all of us.
I will say that using the new subdivision may not be the best way to look at it because they're going to have HOA.
I, I agree.
But if we have ones that don't have HOA, I understand your point. Now, on the new one, I had to talk with the developers, I don't know if they're going to go the HOA route, but cornerstone is not going to allow people to park on the grass. And HOA would never let that fly.
But, but the other thing is in regard to that, even if they have an HOA, the city doesn't have the authority to enforce HOA rules.
Correct, yeah.
So if they have an HOA that's active and, and has forced their rules, then it won't be a problem out there.
If you don't have a regulation.
If we don't have a regulation.
Correct.
I know like Francis Texas Street, right now, there's not that many houses on it. But just think, if there, if there were, if the houses lined up and down Texas Street, it's only 20 feet wide, I just measured the street, it's like 20 feet wide. If you park one, even one car, you know, it's going to, a thousand people coming up and down that road. And that wouldn't be a thousand, but you know, potential 500 cars a day coming up and in and out of that road. You know, it's going to be a lot of sitting and waiting on cars going around. We need to address something, yes, I do, but we need to make sure what, whatever we decide it's best and not, like I said, come back two months from now and say, oh hell, we shouldn't have done that. Because we're going to be back where we are today.
After we told everyone to park the street.
Yeah.
So I, you said that they have to have a permit only if it's concrete, if they do improve their driveway?
Currently, we only issue concrete driveway permits.
Could we have a moratorium on that if it's somebody that's in existence that wants to improve their driveway? Because sometimes they have to pay for that permit?
They essentially pay for the inspection fee.
And what is that?
$100.
But I understand it needs to be inspected because we need to make sure it's done right, too. I mean, but, I mean, that's just.
I'm not saying it doesn't need to be inspected. Maybe a sell price.
Yeah, a wage or a discounted price for, enforce this ordinance, just for this ordinance, basically.
Run your grandfather clause back again.
So there's multiple ways to do it. Like I said, 50% communities have some type of extension and it varies. So one, one of the ways that I gave you an exhibit in your packet of the one that may make the most sense is to do it off a certificate of occupancy basis. So if you have a certificate of occupancy, by the date that, whatever that date the ordinance would be amended and passed, they are considered legal nonconforming. They will not have to put an improved drive down until they improve their property by adding square footage, going 50% more in evaluation that would require a new certificate of occupancy. Essentially acts as yours zoning ordinance would. Because it's exactly what happens on zoning ordinances when someone comes in with a legal nonconforming property. So if they hit any of those two items, then they have to bring it to.
The issue though is, the violation is not that they don't have a driveway. The violation is that they're actually parking in the grass. They could put a driveway in, there are, there are instances where people have improved driveway, concrete, asphalt, and they're still parking in the grass. We did find some examples of that. So the legal nonconformant would go to those people that are in violation in some form or fashion and they would be able to remain in violation until actually they improve their property some way. Then they would have to make accommodations to install that driveway in accordance with the ordinance.
Yeah, I drove around, since our last meeting, I just drove around through town looking at, you know, different areas. And there was some residents that had six, seven, eight, 10 vehicles in their yard. I mean, and, well, and then some of them, like you said, they had a driveway, I mean, two cars, you know, two cars wide and too deep and they were parking in the grass instead of parking in the driveway.
And just like we do when we do a major construction project, the contractor responsible, they will go through and videotape the entire scope of that project both sides of the street so that people can't say that they damaged something or if they did, if we have that, and we require that. That way we can document the before and after impact. So we would in fact, once the ordinance is updated and finalized, if it is, remains in effect, then you take the entire city and identify on that by video of evidence of violations. And so if we did have some kind of legally nonconforming situation, we would be able to document whether or not it was actually legally nonconforming or if it's a new violation.
In your career as city managers, have you ever implemented ordinances like this?
Well, I told you before, every city that I've been in has had this ordinance in place where parking in the front yard or side yard was prohibited. But they have not had, had the situation, excuse me, the situations weren't the same because of the fact that there wasn't the level of, of problem or issue.
Nonconforming, yeah.
That exists here. But you, that's, the answer is yes, I have.
Do you know if there's grant money available for improvements like this?
That is one of the things, I don't know for sure whether there is or not.
I, I understand as we get more development, we'll have more income and we can make it a line item finance maybe sometime. Is that?
But that's one of the things that I've suggested to them, I suggest to the mayors in, in the future as we, as we move forward and we have to start, you know, if we, if this passes and we addressed those worst violators to begin with, you know, that have 12 vehicles in their, their yard or in some other way. As we go down the road, if there are, if we do budget some grant money available, whether it's because we got grant money from the, from the state or federal government or we actually just set aside a certain amount of money each year for, for potential grants to qualified homeowners that don't have the resources that qualify to be able to help them in some way, make improvements.
But that can't be, that can't be part of our.
That wouldn't be part of your motion because we don't know that that money's available.
Back to the certificate of occupancy, I'm sure there's homes here that were built before COs were required. So how do you manage that?
They, they fall in the same bunch. So the assumption would be at some point, there's been an inspection done that's allowed you to live in those homes, especially older ones. So they would be legal nonconforming until improvement is made to that property. And so that way they give you a slow roll, where naturally you won't see it in the next five years, but 15, 20 years from now, as people start improving their properties, you'll start to see more improved surfaces start going down.
So you would have two routes on that? You would have change of ownership and you would have major permitted improvement to get certificate of occupancies?
So change of ownership does not require a certificate of occupancy. It is strictly a property improvement basis that does that. You're thinking of a change of use, which is more of a business type of thing? That would do that. But if you're residentially using a property and then you keep residentially using that property, it is still under the same code it was built as if you built the home in 2000. And you've had four different homeowners, it's still going to be up to code as of 2000 until you improve your property. And then once you improve it, it comes to the new codes of 2024 or whatever year you may be in.
If the property lay vacant and was unoccupied, you know, occupied today and the owners move out and it stays vacant for a couple of years, it would potentially lose that, correct?
Yeah, by zoning code, it's six months. If you.
This is basically a grandfather, I mean, you're talking basically about a grandfather clause. I thought that did change with ownership though, that if the ownership changed, they don't necessarily get that same right.
If the use continues, then a nonconforming use can exist and continue to exist. It is until a use stops for six months at least, then that nonconforming use has to come into conformance.
So if the council approves an amended ordinance, when would it go into effect?
It would take two readings, so it would, two readings, so two council meetings to do so.
And that's where we're at right now because the first reading last year was August and the second reading was in September.
Right, but would there be a grace period to allow people to prepare?
So the ordinance would actually go into effect immediately. How we actually enforce it is what you're talking about.
Yes.
So initially, you know, Mr. Blanchard would go out and, you know, again, he's already done this once by identifying those issues. You know, we would sit down and kind of prioritize, okay, where are we, where are we, based on the new changes, what are, what's still in violation? The first step of that process though, isn't to go out and issue citations. The first step of the process is to notify that particular property owner that there's a problem, that they have a problem and probably invite them to just come in and meet with us to talk about what the potential remediation to that problem is. Whether that's, you know, moving a, moving a boat and a trailer to their backyard, whether that's reducing, you know, 12 vehicles parking the grass down to a more manageable number in the meantime, or, you know, moving vehicles into the street if there's room to, to move in, vehicles into the street. That's going to be the first step. And then we'll, we'll work with them. And I would imagine we'll probably work with them for three or four months after it's finally addressed until we just realize that they are just ignoring us completely. And, and that's when actually more aggressive enforcement would have to be placed. Does that end your question? Okay.
Any further questions for staff?
I have a question. Have we looked into or considered possibly working with somebody like the NBD who does facade grants or programs similar in that nature to where if you're beautifying, if you're improving, they match dollar for dollar? Is that something that we can look into? Is that something that, you know, to help subsidize the cost? Because some of these people, I mean, including myself, can't afford to put a bunch of improved parking. Luckily, I don't like to park in the grass, but there's a lot of people that can't. And if we're willing to ask somebody to do that, to go on that whim and, and pay for that and, and be responsible for the full cost, I would like to see if there's somebody or some group, even if it's the city, whether we're providing some of the materials in exchange for, you know, to subsidize some of the costs that this is going to, you know, because it's not going to be very affordable for a lot of people.
Yeah.
I would like to look into.
I've asked NBD and it does not appear that there's an avenue for that at this time. That could change in the upcoming year when they do their new budget, but as of now.
It might be eligible, but I will find that out.
Yet, once again, we've spent almost an hour on the same topic regarding action of item K.
I would like to see a complete ordinance rewritten, retyped and everything before we.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I don't want to approve something that we may have to come back in two months and three months and.
Hey, but we have a motion on the floor to rewrite?
With our suggestions?
To recreate an ordinance with the back ended language.
That's what you want me to take to council, that's your motion?
When is the next council meeting? I thought you said October.
No, the next council meeting is actually.
Next meeting is next Monday.
Monday.
Next Monday.
Are we talking about a rewrite or an amendment?
Well, it's almost a rewrite because there's a longer line, there's a lot of things and I want to see the complete ordinance.
What does that do for ordinance and code enforcement? I'm just, I'm in the discovery phase of her motion, so.
I, I missed a question, I'm sorry.
If we suggest rewriting the entire section D of that.
I can do that for you, it just needs some direction on if you want exemptions to be allowed, if you do not want them allowed. I, I got the motion on the listing out more improved materials, which I can do. But is there anything else you want added or do you just want that and then this to be retyped and not be redlined anymore?
That'll come from Joan, that's her motion.
Well, I think that we've talked about so many things. Well, I think that we've talked about so many things. I was hoping you made some really good notes, but maybe consider the grandfather. That gives, when the property is improved?
Was that, was that a yes to him?
No, I'm in discussion.
We can add language to that. In fact, if you're not happy with the language that we, that we present to you, we can stretch and make changes to that, but you'll have an ordinance.
Is this an amendment or is this a total rewrite?
That's route.
Well, it is an amendment because there is an existing ordinance that would be...
So, we workshop this again, or will you take this straight to council and then they kick it back to us?
No, it will come back to you as a, as a complete ordinance for you to vote on.
Okay, so I have the permission on the table, but what does the, what do the commissioners feel about the grandfather?
Well, your motion either gets a second or it dies on table.
Before we can discuss?
Yeah, well...
Because then the grandfather clause is part of the rewrite, so...
That's what I'm asking, how y'all feel about it?
If you want it to be part of the rewrite, it can be.
Ben is asking if you want, if you want that grandfather part of the rewrite.
We have the rewrite in order. I will rewrite it. I just need to know what item do you want in that rewrite, so that way I give you an ordinance that y'all can put on.
If a grandfather, does that mean that people can continue to park all twelve vehicles in the grass? I mean...
Potentially.
But see, that's, that's, that's one of the reasons why we're here. We're, we're trying to beautify, you know, make, make it more appearable. I mean...
Hey, 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 we pet a motion.
We, we want our community to be more, I mean, appearance, when people drop through it, right? I mean, you don't want to, like, that's why this is...
A part of this was abandoned cars, too. We don't discuss it in the public on that.
I would recommend the candidate this way. Just because you're grandfathering something does not mean it's not going to come to compliance. It's just going to naturally over time, as they have to improve that property, they'll have to put in a driveway. So, instead of seeing a change in one year, that's going to be a burden on a lot of people's pocketbooks. In ten, fifteen years, as they naturally save up some money and they want to improve their property, they will naturally put in those drives, so you'll start to see that happen over time.
And as cars disappear, so if I have twelve cars parked on my property today, and I have ten cars, a lot of them now parked on my property, and, you know, six months from now, I still have ten cars, then I can't go back to put twelve cars on my property. I, you know, if I have, as, as, it will naturally over time improve.
Will there be letters sent out?
I'm sorry?
At the implementation of this new rewrite, there'll be letters sent out that you're nonconforming, or where, where's the action plan?
So, we've committed to the citizens already that whatever action we take, everybody will get notice via mail.
They'll receive notice that they're in legal nonconformant and they're not allowed to, and we will document the level of noncompliance. So, like I said before, it's not going to get worse. If they have two cars in violation today, they're not going to be able to have three in the future if we go with the legal nonconformant.
It's a little confusing. So, without the grandfather clause, they still can't park in the yard.
I'm sorry?
Oh, no, that's what you're saying, that if you...
Yeah, that's what...
We're kind of...
Can you put, can you put, can you put a time limit on the grandfather clause, like you have two years to come up to this com, this compliance?
You know, I have actually asked the city attorney, I've actually texted the fight out in regards of legal nonconformant issue, and she has not replied yet.
So, we have a motion on the table.
Typically, no. Legal nonconformant is not going that way.
If we don't get a second, it can die, and y'all can offer me another motion.
Just to review my motion, that is that we're going to have an amended ordinance at our next meeting to review, and then ask, well, what do you want in that amendment? And that's how this discussion came about.
Shannon, do you have that down? I'm so confused. I don't know where we're at.
Well, I, I think what she's saying is it's not, it's not going to just die. It's...
No, it's got to come back. It would...
It's going to come back.
Yeah. One way or the other, council is going to give us direction after we make a motion to them. Second call out, we have a motion on the table.
Can we, can Shannon, can you tell what the motion is, or...
So, we're going to create an ordinance with recommended language, such as including more materials that are allowed. I believe it's talked about eliminate restrictions of parking on the streets, and what about towing?
Eliminating that and grandfather clause? Did we...
I'm not sure on that.
Okay, and visit. Read it to us again one more time. This will be the motion. This will be the motion.
Create an ordinance with recommended language, including more of the allowable materials, eliminating the restrictions of parking on the streets, and eliminating the towing language.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, right hand. Three to one. Okay. Hi, Ben. Review and approve the, uh, no, receive the monthly code enforcement report. This will be page forty-two of, or, yeah, one, two, three, four, page five of your packet.
Okay, so this is the code report for the month of August. And so, I broke it down by cases. For those who may be curious, we've done sixty-five trash and debris cases of this fiscal year, two hundred and thirty-five high grass cases, and then fifty-two other cases, which would be landscaping in the right way, property maintenance code issues, things of that nature. In that breakdown, this year, there's been three hundred cases that have been complied with, twenty-six have been voided, but are now open again as we'll look to abate those that haven't already been abated. About fifty percent of those have been abated naturally. We just don't have a mailing address for the owner, so we have no idea who, who did that work for them. Twelve are currently in court for noncompliance, and then we have fourteen that are open that have not met their timeline to speak to the judge nor have complied yet. And then, as the commission has requested, we keep a running tally of when we started proactive code enforcement. And so, we have had a thousand and forty-four properties that have complied, sixty-seven that have been voided, eighteen that are currently in court, and fourteen that are open. With that, I'll field questions.
By in court, that means people that refuse to comply?
That's right. They have not complied, and so now it's in the judge's court to give them a timeline for compliance, or they could be seeing fines.
That came up quite a bit, places that were untracked.
Questions on the code report?
I think I've asked this before, but repeat violators, is the, is the fine, does it increase?
No. By ordinance and by law, you're only allowed to go up to two thousand per day. So, now, if the judge is going to find anything below that, that's his discretion if he's going to increase it for a repeat violator, but that is purely a judge call. He can just only go to two thousand per violation per day.
And typically, he's not going to build that high on the first violation, so there is, it's a rude decrease in the time.
You have a breakdown between residential and commercial?
I do not. It's a, it's a lot more residential than commercial, probably eighty, twenty.
Questions on the code report? Okay, that closes out D, the new D. Now, now receive the Development Services Department report.
Okay, so this is the Development Services report for August. So, I broke it down by the permits that we've issued. For the month, we've issued fourteen building permits, seven electrical permits, one HVAC permit, and then twenty-six plumbing permits. In that breakdown of the building permits, nine of those have been new homes, which give you an approximate value of one million, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars to the community. All of these homes this month are in the cornerstone subdivision. And then, in that breakdown, an additional twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars were invested in the other building permits. And then, staff has also held two development meetings, with one property being on the east side, which you saw today, and then one on the west side that you have not seen at this moment.
Your total was what compared to the one point one eight number? You said it was what? Total additional one point nine, did you say?
So, yeah, the nine new homes, they total roughly one point two million in estimate value increase to the community, and all these homes are at cornerstone this month.
How many certificates of occupancy have been issued so far?
We're in the twenties. I'll get back with you with a definite number, but we are in the twenties now. So, about fifty percent, I think.
Level of twenties, so, yeah.
Is there, I think.
Okay. Questions regarding the Development Services report? Second call. Questions for the Development Services report? That closes out the new F, the new G, which was F. Consider and take any necessary action on a short form subdivision submitted by Forest Sasser for property known as seven seven five Green Street, Rockdale, Midland County, Texas, into lot eight and nine eight. That tells me there was an existing eight, and we've broken out into an eight and nine eight?
Actually, no, and that's going to be one of the corrections. So, this was a lot that had two parts. So, it was part of eight and part of nine, so in their legal description, they kept that. In staff comments, there's two comments. The first is they need to reference it as one lot instead of two, because it truly is just going to be one lot. So, it should be eight A or it should be nine A, but it should not be eight through nine. The second comment is you're required to notarize signatures when you sign a plat, and they just, we probably copy and paste it and forgot that we do not have Sylvia Torrente in office, and so we cannot notarize under her notary. And so, we've asked them just to remove the name, keep it blank, so that way our internal staff can notarize when they come in to sign the plat. With that, it's a clean plat. This is a plat. Seven seven five Green will be one of the home program houses that will be torn down and built soon. And so, they need to have a clean plat to receive a new certificate of occupancy.
The recommendation is to approve it with those changes?
I'll make a recommend, I recommend that we approve it with the changes as noted.
We have a recommendation to approve it with changes?
Second.
We have a recommendation and a second to approve it with changes. All those in favor? Motion made, seconded, and carries. Wow. Now, we're on H, which was the former G. Consider and take any necessary action on a short form subdivision submitted by, wait a minute, same thing, okay. Forest Sasser for property known as one zero zero four East San Andres Avenue, Rockdale, Midland County, Texas, into lot eleven E.
So, this one is another home program house. That's why you're going to see the same submittal, because it's the same surveyor, and they just made the same mistake with the notary. And so, we're just asking to remove that notary's name, to leave it blank, so that way we may fill it in and notarize the signature ourselves.
Questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a, I'll make a recommendation for approval as noted as well.
Second. We have a motion and a second that we approve with notes. All those in favor? Right hand, yeah. All right, all those in favor, Joan?
I agree.
Okay, all right. Motion made, seconded, and carries. Action I. Consider and take any necessary action on a short form subdivision submitted by Forest Sasser on property known as two three six North Wilcox, Rockdale, Midland County, Texas, into lot five A.
Again, this is another home program house that will be torn down and rebuilt. This one has a, a little bit more comments. I'll go over them with you. If you have questions, just ask. The first, we'll keep it simple. Sylvia's name is in this notary block as well, so we'll ask it to be removed, so that way we can notarize. They added a signature block for Rosa Martinez, who is no longer with us, and so we've asked them to remove that. On the drainage easement on the property, they put instrument number, question mark, question mark. And so, we've asked either to dedicate that easement by plat, or if it's already a dedicated easement, to actually put the instrument number in that plat. And then, the last two comments are going to be on their building setback lines, which is their dash lines. We have asked them to put building setback line along North Wilcox, because this is a North Wilcox address, and currently, they show it on Bell, I believe. And then, we've also add, asked them to add building setback line four, which is a street side setback, so instead of nine feet, it's going to be fifteen feet. So, essentially, I drew it out for you. Everything just needs to rotate, one over, and they'll just have to add BS four in there with the notation that that's a fifteen foot setback.
How was that orientation because of the lot description, the address, in other words, determine that? There's no driveway or anything indicated?
Right, so it's a, it's a North Wilcox address, and his front door faces North Wilcox, so that naturally accesses his front yards, so the building setback line should notate that.
So, we had those notations?
We've asked them just essentially move everything over and add building setback four, because it's not going to be a nine foot side setback. It could actually be fifteen.
How does that work? So, that's a flood zone.
So, in the flood zone, they won't be building in it, and they'll have to build with a flood elevation certificate that they'll receive before building, that they'll essentially build it over the flood plain.
Okay, so they'll have to build, build a pad?
Yeah.
Technical question. We can approve without variances, like the other two, because that's a legal question that has to go before council with the notary?
No.
Signature or...
It's a, it's a plat, and so these are just amendments to the plat as you'll see normally. The only time I have to go to council, if it's a preliminary plat or it has a variance request attached to that plat, which is a council decision. This is neither. It is just a short form subdivision, which only comes before you guys. So, they'll essentially make all these changes, give it to staff, and then we'll file it.
These three, these three will be ready for...
Right. When they make those amendments, it will be ready for filing.
I make a motion that we approve the third one with all the notations that need to be done.
I'll second. Motion made and seconded to approve with notes. All those in favor, right hand. Motion made, seconded, and carries. The new J. Consider and take any necessary action on an ordinance regarding open and outdoor storage.
So, we received comments last time about adding language to allow for outdoor display of merchandise for sale, and also allowing furniture that's designed for an outdoor use. So, what we did is if you look at the amendment of what we're proposing, we just added the language at the end of screening of loading and storage facilities is required. We essentially just say that those two items are exempt from that requirement. So, instead of changing your definition, that is a good definition already. You've just provided exemptions for what you've expressed at the last meeting.
Questions? Second call for questions. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the addition of new language for the ordinance regarding open and outdoor storage.
Motion made and seconded that we approve with the changes. Those in favor, right hand. Motion made, seconded, and carries. Consider and take any necessary action on a recommendation to the city council regarding a noise ordinance amendment.
So, this is going to be an amendment that is essentially a rewrite, because the past ordinance was subjective and unenforceable. So, Barbara got this from her community she used to work in, which is an excellent ordinance. I want to take you to a couple of items that you specifically asked for. So, if you see, you'll see the yellow highlighted areas that first, there are some noises that without having to measure our deemed a nuisance, which we specifically listed out. And then, in eight oh three oh oh four exemptions, you specifically asked for what we would do with the fair or what we would do in the district, our downtown central area district that's naturally going to have hopefully more outdoor music in the future. So, we called the fair to ask them how late they usually run. They gave us one AM. So, what we're proposing in the exemption is community events such as fair, sporting events, school activities, community festivals, et cetera, can run, be exempt until one AM. And then, after one AM, there's going to be a table later on that you'll see that they'll have to meet, which would be their allowed decimal rating. The other that we allowed is the central area district. We're allowing them to be exempt until eleven PM, and then they would have to fall under their allowed decimal rating per their district. So, in eight oh three oh oh six, there's going to be a table one that specifies the time and zoning location and the decimal rating that will be allowed. So, that way, if our police department gets a call at a certain time, they can reference this table. They can measure the decimal rating at the property line and see if that, if they are in compliance or not.
I saw fans and air conditioners. I didn't see anything about generators. Did I overlook it?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I saw generators in here. Okay. And so, it's a far lengthier ordinance, but it's an enforceable ordinance, which is what you specifically asked for.
Can we set the decimal readers or something as simple as just you can put an app on a, on a smartphone?
Well, yes, you can, but I would say that if we're actually trying to enforce it, we'll, we'll hire the police department.
Is that come from us as a recommendation or city council?
As far as...
Or purchase of?
That, if this gets approved, that's just going to be a function that happens, because that is how this, if you look at the enforcement, we, we reference the standard AS, ANSI standard, and so we would get decimal readers that meet that standard.
Questions?
Tell me again what the central district time will be?
So, they're exempt till eleven PM.
Okay.
And that's on weekends. So, if you want to see that on a weekday basis, it can be, but we just wrote it in as only a weekend allowance.
Questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I'll bring up one more thing. Like the World Health Organization and the NIS, they recommend that in residential areas at nighttime, which would be after ten, be like around forty, forty-five or less, basically. So, do you think, I'm still looking at the fifty-five, I suppose. I mean, the fifty.
Mm-hmm.
No, I'm sorry, it is fifty-five in the evening.
Seven, seven, ten, fifty-five.
Okay, then the evening is...
Is fifty.
Seven.
Uh-huh.
So, that's fifty.
So, we can knock it down to forty-five? Is that something that you want to see?
I kind of do from what I've researched. Have y'all researched anything on the decibels?
I don't know. I don't know what's, other ones do?
I would like to.
Knock it down from forty, from fifty to forty-five?
To forty-five, yeah. And I know that, I think it's the World Health Organization says forty-five or below, or the NIS, I can't remember which one offhand.
So, that's just amending that one line?
Barbara, Barbara, do you have anything to say on the difference between fifty and forty?
Well, what I was just asking, Shannon, it's logarithmic, so every time you go up ten, it's actually doubling.
Mm-hmm.
So, just keep that in mind, to go from fifty-five to forty-five, you're cutting it in half. So, and I thought the typical conversation was fifty-five.
I thought so.
When I sent you a listing of all the decibels.
Yeah.
So, fifty-five really at night should not be an issue. I would take it down more than fifty, but that definitely...
In residential, in residential, this one's a good part of that.
So, that would definitely cut out anybody using an air blower or using a stereo or doing any of those at night, because that's, it would exceed that.
By air blower, you mean like jump house and that kind of air blower? You talking about a standard lawn keeping?
Anything, like you couldn't do your lawn work at night, because that would be above sixty-five decibels.
Typical lawn mower is around eighty-five, I think.
Those general engines are about eighty-five.
This mower right now is operating about fifty-five.
With that new knowledge, do you have any other questions, Joan?
Not really. I'm a little confused about the decibels, but it's, can be very confusing. But also, I was reading that seventy, if you are at seventy for any length of time, like even two hours, it can cause hearing damage. And I know that that's industrial and that's difficult for us, but should it be seventy? If that's, it says seventy from seven AM to ten. I know there's shifts, but a shift is usually eight hours. Is that our goal to even be concerned about that?
Well, the other thing you got to, this measurement at the property line. So, if you're...
Is what?
Is at the property line. So, for the workers, you know, that may, they'll have their own earplugs, and it's going to be louder than seventy for them, because these measurements are taken at the property line.
Y'all okay with that?
Well, I'll entertain a motion.
Are we gonna leave it fif, at fifty for the residential, from ten to seven? Is that what we're saying?
I think so, I think that's what she recommended.
What you said, that's a normal conversation, is around fifty?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
If the official warning, official rat report, the lower I recommend you all make fifty, but not forty-five.
You said? Did you say you had yours going right now?
Yes.
This is what?
Um, this is my reading, around fifty-five.
Yeah, I think that's-
At the property line.
Yeah, I think that's-
So, leave it at fifty? All right. So, I'll make that motion, that we leave it as is. And approve this to go to city council.
Motion made to approve this as written.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, everybody by right hand, in favor. Motion made and seconded that we approve it as written. The new action item M, consider and take any necessary action on a recommendation to the city council regarding an ordinance amendment to allow drive-throughs for mobile food vendors.
So, we received this comment from a citizen two months ago now.
Mm-hmm.
And so, in discussion last time, y'all had some items, so I wanted to go over it line by line to make sure that you're okay with how it's written. It'll be in red line in your proposed ordinance. So, the first thing that we would ask them to do is they'd have to have a separate window and a separate drive, if they're gonna have a drive-through lane. And then, on that drive-through lane, they have to post a sign that says "drive-through only." The next item is gonna be, if they're only doing a drive-through, we're still gonna ask them to put a sign. So, it covers both your bases, if you're gonna have a unit that does both, and if you have a unit that does one, it'll still say "drive-through only," so that way, you know, you can't go walk up to that one in order. Next one is gonna be, pretty much from the beginning to the end of your transaction, the area needs to be improved of where the car is gonna be, from starting your drive-through to exiting with your food and getting back on the right-of-way. The next item, the drive should never cross, so if you're gonna do both, your drive-through lane cannot eventually come across your residential pickup lane. And then, we're gonna ask them to put in a protective measure such as a bollard, that would protect the unit, and would also protect the onsite customer lane. The next, they'll have to give staff a site plan that shows where their improved surface is gonna be, where the sign is gonna be that says "drive-through only" before approval. And then, this is an item that we'll need to discuss, because we can be as specific as we wanna be, or we can not be so specific. But I put in there that a proposed drive-through must accommodate for a minimum of seventy-four feet from the street entrance, on which cars, cars pull up to the unit, to avoid them stacking up into traffic. You can word that differently, if you don't wanna give them a measurement, you can essentially just say that your line must not line up in right-of-way.
Seventy-four foot is about two to three car lengths, maybe four, if it's not a duly-
Yeah, the way I did the measurement was, we require our length of parking spots to be eighteen and a half, and so, you're naturally in a parking spot not gonna be butted up against each other, so that'll give you some space, so that'll be four car lengths, would be seventy-four. Again, that can be as specific as you want it to be, or if you want to allow them to be creative in how they line their cars up, you can allow that with specifying that they just cannot line up in right-of-way.
And this will be part of a packet at the permitting stage, or how to-
If this is approved, there's a packet that already exists with the ordinance in it, so essentially, that packet will be amended to have this in there as an option, so that way, if you wanna do a drive-through, drive-through, you know exactly what our standards are. What I expect.
A bollard, I mean, a bollard is something more permanent, uh, it's, a food truck typically isn't permanent. So, we're asking them to have a bollard? Man, it's kinda hard for, like, if a food truck gets a permit to park in City Hall one weekend, you're gonna let them anchor a, a steel bollard, a metal bollard in the concrete, or?
So, for temporary, you don't get a permit, this is more of a permanent usage. So, if you're doing a mobile food vendor for a year or more, you pull a permit, and you update it annually, you know, be asked to put that, you can do something other than a bollard, the way it's worded, we use the bollard as a reference. But it just says a protective measure such as, so if you wanna go something more temporary, that's a protective measure, as long as it's presented to staff and-
Steak-in bollards, or something that-
Yeah, something that just prevents the car from easily driving through, you at least have a visual that you're not supposed to be here. It was asked last time, I think, I don't remember which commissioner brought that up, and so, I've just given bollard as a reference, but that's not the only way that you could essentially protect the unit or the customer lane from incoming cars.
So, we could use terminology like a barricade or barrier to prevent?
Yeah, I can amend the terminology if you want.
Just to put in, or how it-
The way it reads now, it allows for more options than just a bollard, but again, we can be as specific as we wanna be, or we can leave it up to interpretation that they can provide a plan. I would recommend leaving it up to interpretation, just because you may have someone that comes in with a, a new measure three years from now that may have not existed, as a good way to prevent cars from driving through, and if we specifically list it out, then it won't be allowed, and we have to do another ordinance amendment.
I think laser saber or something would be better.
And then, the last line is that we just say right-of-way may not act as improved drive, meaning you can't face your mobile food vendor on a calhoun to where your drive-through is, they're coming on calhoun to get their food and going to the light. So, you actually have to be on your own property, improving your own drive-through lane outside of right-of-way.
So, so, these are primary, and nearly all of them are for fixed, this, this doesn't concern festivals and events and things like that?
Right, because those are temporary, so they, they don't get a-
There's some things here that say, I, I, as I read through the whole thing the other night, talks about if you're somewhere more than four hours, so-
It's raining, yay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so the way it's, it's been done, uh, since I've been here, is if you're gonna do something temporary, like go to the fair and set up a mobile food, they don't have to pull a permit for that.
Okay.
As long as they have their requirements from the county health department, that their unit is serviceable, that is sufficient.
Do you have any data on how many have drive-through on weekend events?
No, because they don't pull a permit, and then, I, the data with us would be zero, because it's not allowed right now.
One other question might not be relevant, but, does the, do we have a county health department that does this?
Yeah, w- we do.
We, we don't, you know, it's supposed to, they, it's supposed to mandate, we don't have one that comes to the daycare, we just have to post a letter that says we don't have one.
Oh, well, when I deal with them regarding this matter, they've had the capacity to inspect those units, and they-
Those units, okay.
And they actually provide us their certificate that says, here's our permit from the county, and then, that's part of our permit, so they actually do have the capacity in this regard to do it.
Okay. Yeah, I said it wasn't relevant, I was just curious.
Yeah, they, it's hit or miss on some things, but this is one that they actually do service.
Okay.
Before we go into the motion, do y'all wanna go back through these amendments, these red-letter items? Any questions for Ben on our red lighter, red letter items?
Actually, like the way you say a minimum of seventy-four feet to avoid parks, parking or stopping in the, uh, blocking traffic in the right-of-way, I think that's good personally.
And, and I, I do, you know, the way we came up with, you can't be crossing the NDOTA traffic, you're gonna get somebody, especially kids or somebody.
Yeah, the seventy-four feet's the one that I had the most question on, if y'all were okay with that, because it's gonna differ from sites, because obviously, if you're gonna be seventy-four feet, you're gonna be pretty deep into your site to allow for a drive-through once, if you wanna allow other language that you can have an alternate plan that would show four car lengths won't pack up parking right-of-way. We can add that language, if you just wanna leave a minimum of seventy-four feet to, to make sure, you can do that as well.
Well, I think it actually says both, that it's minimum of seventy-four feet and avoiding cars blocking the traffic in the right-of-way.
Right now, the way it reads is you have to meet seventy-four feet, and in the case that seventy-four feet is not enough, as in you're really busy and you're really successful, then you have to remediate it right-of-way. So, it does not allow for less than seventy-four feet current.
From a safety standpoint, is that adequate?
It, it is, but you just wanna, the reason I bring up the question is, you're gonna have different site plans, so maybe you have actually a narrower but wider lot, and so, the way your unit's gonna be set up is you can't get seventy-four feet away, so you wouldn't be able to do a drive-through. So, if you add language, that would essentially say, as long as your drive-through does not impede right-of-way, then you're okay, you can do that, or if you wanna strictly leave it at seventy-four feet, so that way, it's a bigger lot requirement, you can do it that way.
So, in other words, we could say minimum of seventy-four feet and/or not blocking.
Mm-hmm, if you wanna add the potential, because at the end of the day, they're gonna give a site plan to staff.
Right.
And so, it will have to be reviewed by somebody that your drive-through is gonna work.
And this works for contiguous or?
And the fact is, if they have a situation where they, where it is seventy-four feet, and they end up in a situation operating, and they have ten cars that need to wait, and it's backing up on the, on the right of way, we're gonna have to shut it down to-
Yeah. They have to remediate it right-of-way.
That language would be on your side?
So, it's already in there, the way it is, the only language I'm asking if you're interested in is being more inclusive and saying, if you cannot meet seventy-four feet, if you provide a site plan that allows for a four-car line to not be in right-of-way, you could receive approval. That would accommodate your more wider, narrower lots that can't get seventy-four feet deep. It is strictly your decision, it's just that may be an issue that you'll see if we only keep it at seventy-four feet, is the wider lots are gonna have a hard time meeting that.
Take it, Daniel, run with it.
Basically, if it's, like you said, if it's a wider but narrower, uh, or not as deep, uh, they could set the food truck on one end and, and have a, like a loop come around instead of being seventy-four feet.
Instead of being straight, yeah, you could essentially, yeah, curve it, loop it, however you want, that way, you meet four cars, it may not be seventy-four feet, but you're still meeting the same requirement, that they're not in the right-of-way, and then, you keep the language up to that, that if they were so busy, they'd have to essentially pass cars through, that you can't have them stacked up in right-of-way.
And when they ask for a permit, you get their plan, and you know which side of the trailer the windows are on, we're not gonna have-
Yeah, on the site plan, they'll have to show which windows are which, where the sign is gonna be, that it is a drive-through only lane, they're gonna have to show where the improved surface of the drive is, which will show staff how they're gonna line those cars up, and then, they'll have to notate on that site plan, the footage, so that way, we can make sure that there's four cars that can stack up here, they'll receive approval, if they don't, then they'll have to keep amending until they provide that documentation.
Question for staff. Questions for staff. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a, a motion that we approve with the notes that you just recommended.
I got the link.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion made to approve with notes.
I see.
Motion made and seconded that we approve with notes, all those in favor, right hand. Motion made, seconded. It passes. Consider and take any necessary action on electing a vice chair. Anybody not here is a strong candidate for being, oh, did I miss something?
No.
I thought we had, I thought John was our vice chair.
So, you did, and he has resigned, and so, you'll have to fill in that vice chair role.
As a word of warning, don't turn in your resignation, and then, an hour later, try to take it back.
Yeah.
I'm just giving you a word of warning, it creates a situation.
So, this is, we have to have a new vice chair, and that does not prevent Mr. Williams from running again, but we have to act on the letter that we received, and so, you'll have to appoint a new vice chair.
We can't elect him right now, Doug, have we figured out what the sequence is yet?
Sequence on-
He has to reapply, he has to be approved, and then, he can apply for, right? So, currently, technically, we have a vacancy on the NC. As long as we're clear on that, so, regarding, consider and take any necessary action on electing a vice chair.
So, we have to have one currently, correct?
Yes. Doug Williams may skip the country very soon.
Because if Doug is out, you need to have somebody that can run your meeting, and so, that will be your vice chair.
Can we just nominate?
You can volunteer.
Well, no, I wouldn't do that. I, I would nominate Commissioner Ratliff.
Would Commissioner Ratliff accept?
Well, I've done it before, so, yes.
I'll second.
A motion and acceptance and a second that, uh, Commissioner Ratliff will be the vice chair. I don't see anything else on my, did I miss anything with all the relettering, did I miss anything? At three eighteen, I adjourn this meeting.
Thank y'all.